Good evening, everyone. I now call to order the regular September 12th, 2024 Orange Unified School Board meeting at 5:00. Trustee Erickson, do we have quorum?
We do.
Okay. And do we have any public comments on closed session items?
We do. We have one public comment, Darshan Smoladen.
Good evening, Board, President Page, Superintendent Gonzalez, and staff. Actually, I'm a little nervous, and I don't want to be here giving this speech tonight, but here I am. Tonight, you will be discussing Mr. Gonzalez's performance review, and to be honest, I have serious concerns and reservations about his ability to effectively maintain this district, much less move it forward. The community no longer trusts you. They don't even trust you to take care of the children of this district's basic safety. There were examples, other examples, this past few weeks, this past week regarding the heat, but instead, I'm going to focus on one issue. That's the crossing guards that were absent from our schools this fall. Regardless of whether what the city did was right or wrong, Mr. Gonzalez completely let the students and families of this district down. One email notifying parents was insufficient. You did nothing to advocate for our student safety. You did nothing to fix a problem that you knew was coming for two months. Nothing. When notified of the cancellation of the program, your response via email that we got via a public records request from the city was, and I quote, "That's disappointing." Our students, our families, our staff, and our teachers need someone who will ride into battle for them, have the hard conversations, not roll over in acceptance, and do nothing. You let our kids down, and you forced us, the community, once again to pick up the mantle and fight for our kids. I'm tired. I don't want to do your job. I spent at least 40 hours over the last two weeks campaigning, cajoling, bullying, pleading for the council to bring back the crossing guards. We organized people to write in, call elected officials, look for funding, all in the hope of bringing safety to our children. Mr. Gonzalez, what did you do? I can no longer sit by quietly. You have held this position for a year and a half. What do you have to show for it besides parents who don't trust you and a community that is doing your job for you? Do better, be better, or leave. Because I want to see, I want to see people who will fight for every single one of our children leading this district.
We will adjourn at 5:05 for closed session.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Orange Unified School Board Meeting, September 12, 2026. Please join me in standing and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Time of opening. Seven oh eight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now on to Mr. Gonzalez with the report of closed session decisions.
Thank you, President Page. The Board of Education is pleased to announce the following appointment. Matthew Whitmer to the position of Assistant Superintendent Educational Services. And we had an absent Board Member, so I'm going to read the vote. It was six zero one. Yes, Erickson, Pelly, Page, Yamazaki, Glass, Ortega, and absent Rumsey. Congratulations, Matthew.
Okay, thank you, and now on to the Superintendent's Report. First, we're going to adopt the agenda. Can I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. Thank you, Trustee Pelly. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six zero one. Now on to the Superintendent's Report.
Apologize, I have a lot of words tonight. First, I'd like to start with Patriot Day. Schools across our district proudly hosted Patriot Day ceremonies in remembrance of September 11th, 2001, honoring the courageous first responders and military personnel who dedicated their lives to safeguarding our nation and communities. These events brought together students, staff, community members to reflect on the heroism and sacrifice shown on that tragic day and the continued service of those who protect us. Also, I'd like to mention that in light of the recent tragic events in Georgia, we extend our heartfelt condolences to all those affected. This serves, of course, as a somber reminder of the importance of community and the safety of our schools. At Orange Unified, the safety and well-being of our students and staff and family remain the highest priority. We are committed to maintaining and securing learning environments through the ongoing review and enhancement of our safety protocols. In collaboration with the Orange County Department of Education and Office of Student and Community Services, they train principals and assistant principals on Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines called C-Tag. Training for counselors and psychologists is scheduled for November 2024. This initiative will further strengthen our safety protocols and ensure that our teams are prepared to address potential threats. Our district has adopted a multi-departmental approach to improving safety and security. The Office of Student and Community Services is working closely with our consultant to update our Emergency Operations Center, District Master Emergency Operations Plan, Comprehensive School Safety Plans, and provide for comprehensive staff training. We also recognize the essential role of our community partners play in these efforts. Our ongoing collaborations with local law enforcement agencies in Santa Ana, Anaheim, Villa Park, Orange, and Garden Grove are critical to enhancing our safety measures for the 24-25 school year. As a follow-up to last year's emergency response training, we are partnering with Knowledge Saves Lives, I think most people know them as KSL, to offer virtual training or develop training video for new staff that have joined our district this year. Our dedicated team of educators, security personnel, and local authorities work collaboratively to ensure that our schools are safe spaces for learning, growth, and connection. By fostering an atmosphere of care and vigilance and mutual respect, we can continue creating a supportive environment and security for all. Thank you for your continued support and commitment to ensuring the safety of our school community. Next, I'd like to make a recognition of Nicole Jones. On behalf of the entire Orange Unified Committee, we extend our deepest gratitude to Ms. Nicole Jones for her outstanding service and invaluable contributions as a parent-teacher organization, representative on our Measure S Citizens Oversight Committee. Ms. Jones has been a dedicated member of the committee since her appointment in November of 2019, generously giving her time, expertise, and commitment over the past five years. In her role, Ms. Jones played an essential part in ensuring transparency and accountability by reviewing the expenditures for bond projects, guaranteeing that all funds were being used according to the voter-approved Measure S Bond Language. Her dedication has been instrumental in supporting the continued safety and success of our school, making a lasting impact on our students, staff, and families. So, thank you, Ms. Jones, for your remarkable service and making a positive difference in our community. Thank you. I also wanted to make some remarks on the heat. I'm sure, as you know, recent temperatures and poor air quality resulting from nearby wildfires have made it necessary to modify outdoor activities at our school and prioritize the health and safety for our students and staff. So, I want to extend my sincere gratitude to our teams district-wide for their ongoing efforts to keep our school environment safe and comfortable, especially during this time. Your commitment and adaptability are deeply appreciated as we navigate these challenges. And we continue collaborating with the Orange County Department of Ed and closely monitoring the situation. Additionally, our district is working with the California Inter-Scholastic Federation, which everybody knows as CIF, to monitor air quality and ensure the safety of our athletes, making adjustments to athletic events as needed. Your understanding and cooperation are greatly appreciated, and we thank you very much for your support. I wanted to provide an update on crossing guards. We are encouraged by Orange City Council's decision on Tuesday to reinstate the crossing guard program as it addresses a critical public safety concern for the city of Orange and the communities we serve. Ensuring the safety of our students is always a top priority, and this action represents a significant step towards protecting them as they travel to and from school. While we have not yet received a formal proposal from the city regarding the crossing guard program, we remain fully committed to working together on viable solutions. This includes exploring and supporting potential grant funding opportunities to enhance public safety. At Orange Unified, we highly value our partnership with the city of Orange and look forward to collaborating closely with city officials to ensure continued safety and well-being of our students and the broader community. And lastly, Orange High ribbon cutting is coming soon. It's exciting news that our Measure S Phase Two is wrapping up at Orange High School. The community is invited to tour the new facility during an open house celebration on October 24th. Keep an eye out on our social media feeds and websites for additional information. I know that was a lot, but thank you very much for indulging me, and that concludes my report.
Thank you so much for sharing. I believe the rest of the board is also pleased to see the reversal of the decision for crossing guards, and I just want to thank our community teachers and parents and everyone coming out to give public comment to City Council because it truly made a difference, and we're excited to see our crossing guards back in hopefully a few weeks. They did say it could take a little more than that. Moving on to the President's Report, I want to say that September is Literacy Month, and it is a time to celebrate the power of reading, its impact on our student success. And as we recognize this important month, we are reminded that literacy is not only the foundation of learning, but also a gateway to opportunity, critical thinking, and lifelong achievement. In our district, we are committed to fostering the love of reading at every grade level and ensuring that each student has the tool to thrive in this world driven by knowledge. So, together with our dedicated teachers and engaged families, we can empower all of our students. Also, there's a time for celebration, and I have a couple of medals and awards to be able to present today. There's something called the President's Volunteer Service Award, not the President of OUSD, the President of the United States. And this award was established in 2003 by the President's Council on Service and Civic Participation to acknowledge the vital role of volunteers' play in shaping America's strength and identity. This award celebrates individuals whose service makes a positive impact on communities across the nation, encouraging others to take action as well. And with that, we have six Saravilla Middle School students who have earned this award. Our volunteer students interacted with our Mandarin Immersion Summer Camp, and they taught our elementary school Mandarin Immersion students. Along with helping maintain classroom order, they assisted teachers in distributing handouts along with lessons, and they spoke Chinese the entire time. When the summer camp students came across sentences that they didn't understand, the volunteers were able to communicate with them and provide an opportunity to apply language skills in real-life situations. So, I would like to invite up Benjamin Velasco, Alexander Velasco, Ilana Abreu, Eric Grover, Lila Chow, and Sabrina Wang. And I'd love to present your medals for you. I'd also like to thank Jennifer Hewitt, who was instrumental in providing the Mandarin Immersion Summer Camp for our students and fostering our youth.
Parents, if you'd like to come up closer to take videos and pictures, please do.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. Yes, you're welcome to come up. You can go right in front of the podium, you'll probably get a good picture there.
Thank you, and now we have the introduction of our student board members. I believe Mr. Angel will introduce them.
Good evening, President Ms. Page, members of the board, Mr. Gonzalez and Cabinet. Every year, our District Board of Education invites each school to select an outstanding student to represent them at school board meetings. Our students are a source of valuable insights into the effect of school board decisions on Orange Unified School District's high school population. Throughout the 24-25 school year, the Office of the Superintendent will work with the student reps to facilitate communication between the Board of Education and the students of our district. Student board members will attend board meetings and sit at your right, highlight one aspect of their school that is unique, and return communication to their schools regarding decisions made at board meetings. This evening, I am delighted to welcome our 24-25 student board members. It is my pleasure to introduce Canyon High School's student board member to our school board for the 24-25 school year, Sahar Tanara. Unfortunately, Sahar couldn't be here with us tonight as she has a volleyball game with the Canyon team this evening. Sahar is a senior at Canyon High School. She is interested in serving as her school's student board member because she wants to be involved, give back to her community, and learn more about how the school system operates. Sahar hopes to bring unique perspective from Canyon to the board meetings. Her goal is to think logically about solving problems and keep the students' need at the forefront. Sahar is treasurer of the Persian Club, vice president of the Helping Hands Club at Canyon. She has been playing volleyball since she was 10 years old, and she is the captain of the Canyon Girls volleyball team. She loves to play piano and enjoys volunteering with her friends through Lion's Heart. Sahar plans to major in chemistry or biochemistry and follow the pre-med track before going to medical school. Jimena Quijano Espinoza will be the student board member rep for El Medina High School for the 24-25 school year. Jimena, please join me. Jimena is a senior at El Medina High School. She was motivated to become a student board member because she wants to be involved in district-level decision-making that impacts students' lives throughout OUSD and to advocate for the students of El Medina to ensure they have the best high school experience possible. She aims to keep the student body informed about their education and to raise awareness of their ability to advocate for what they believe is important. Jimena is the vice president of NHS and Interact, supports the Hispanic community on campus through the Mecha Club, and sings with the Chambers Singers. In her spare time, she engages in community service in Orange, at the Orange Public Library, the Friendly Center, and through Interact. She also serves as a customer student for the upcoming presidential election. Jimena would like to major in international relations or pre-law with the plans to study abroad and learn more about the world. Thank you. Up next, I am proud to introduce the student- Up next, I am proud to introduce the student board member for Orange High School, Nadia Flores Lopez, for the 24-25 school year. Nadia is a senior at Orange High School. She feels privileged and honored to advocate for her school and is eager to shine a light on the amazing Orange High School campus. She wants to present her ideas and goals that will benefit both her school and her community. Nadia is also looking forward to contributing to the important decisions that improve the educational environment for students. She is involved in college-bound, cross-country, track and field, the early academy outreach program with UCI, Young Life, and Cub Club. Additionally, she volunteers as the leader of food distributions at her church, assisting those in need. Nadia plans to attend a four-year university to major in biology, followed by medical school to pursue a career as an OBGYN. She is currently enrolled in the Medical Assistance Certification Program at Santa Ana College to advance her medical career. As a first-generation Mexican-American, Nadia will be the first in her family to graduate from high school and attend a university. Thank you very much. Villa Park High School will be represented by Alex Tran for the 24-25 school year. Alex, please join me. Alexander is a senior at Villa Park High School. He is motivated to serve as a student board member because he wants to change, I'm sorry, to affect change and contribute positively to his campus and community, with a particular focus on improving facilities. Alexander is the president of the Interact Club and the secretary of the Table Tennis Club at Villa Park High School. He also plays tennis for the school team and enjoys hiking. After high school, Alexander plans to attend a four-year university to major in poli sci, followed by law school. Thank you, Alexander. Richland is still in the process of choosing its board member. We will introduce their student at the next meeting. Once again, thank you to all our student board members. Let's give them one last round of applause. The Board of Education looks forward to working with you during the 24-25 school year. Thank you.
We're getting a request for a group picture.
With the board?
Sorry, we requested it. You stood up, and then we've changed it because I think we're going to wait for Sahar and Richland representative, and then so we'll take that picture next month? Okay, thank you guys, sorry.
All right. Thank you so much for introducing them, Mr. Angel, and we're looking forward to working with you this year. And typically, we've been doing prep sessions to prepare with the agenda a week before the board meeting, and so this year I will be doing it again alongside Dr. Glass. So we'll be supporting you through this process. So any questions that you have, feel free to reach out to us. Thank you. Next, we have the proclamation for Attendance Awareness Month, and I believe that's you again, Mr. Angel.
Yes, that is me. September is Attendance Awareness Month, and as students are welcomed back to school, our district proudly emphasizes the collective effort that has led to significant strides in improving student attendance over the past two school years. This progress has been made possible through the implementation of a comprehensive student attendance process and the We Champion initiative, a testament to our shared commitment to student success. The message is that our students will learn and succeed in the classroom when the barriers to attendance are removed, good attendance patterns are established at a younger age, and schools actively celebrate success in punctuality and improved attendance. Attendance improves when schools closely monitor chronic absenteeism and engage in personalized early outreach and student support. These collective efforts have led to a notable 3.4% reduction in chronic absenteeism at the end of the 22-23 school year. We anticipate a 2.6 reduction in chronic absenteeism when the California Department of Education releases the school dashboard in December 2024. This focused approach has positively impacted student behavior and resulted in an impressive 13.5 million instructional minutes increase. As we continue to build on these accomplishments, we remain dedicated to sustaining this momentum and further reducing barriers to student attendance. Together, we can ensure that every student has the opportunity to achieve their full potential. Thank you for your ongoing commitment to this vital work. Let's continue to champion attendance and celebrate the success of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Angel, and we look forward to seeing more initiatives this year. We have another proclamation to celebrate International Translation Day, and I'm going to hand it off to Ms. Rodriguez.
Okay, good evening, President Page, board members, Superintendent Gonzalez, our executive cabinet, staff and community. September 30th is recognized as International Translation Day, and the district wishes to honor the vital contributions of our amazing interpreters by designating this day as Interpreter Appreciation Day. As our school year progresses, it is essential to acknowledge the role that interpreters play in ensuring that every student and family, regardless of their language background, can fully engage in the educational process. The recognition of International Translation Day provides a meaningful opportunity to highlight the value of effective communication in our schools. By removing language barriers and promoting inclusivity, our interpreters ensure that all students have equitable access to education and resources, fostering a supportive and collaborative learning environment. Interpreters enhance the educational experience by facilitating clear communication between families and school staff, promoting cultural understanding, and ensuring that every voice is heard. Their work is an integral to the district's mission of providing a high-quality education to all students and supporting their academic success. The theme for this year's International Translation Day, Translation: An Art Worth Protecting, emphasizes the critical role of interpreters in preserving the integrity and cultural significance of communication in our diverse community. By closely engaging with families and providing personalized support, interpreters help to build strong relationships that contribute to student success. The Board of Education will adopt the proclamation declaring September 30th as an International Translation Day in recognition of the dedication, skill, and impact of our interpreters. And then I have a group here. Can we invite them up?
Sonia, do you want to say anything?
Well, I didn't prepare anything, but I just want to say thank you so much for acknowledging the role of the interpreters. Working at a school district for about 20 years, my devotion to the families has always been a priority, and I understood that through language, we can connect them, connect them to the right resources or to have a voice. And I want to acknowledge all the community assistants and all the bilingual personnel in every school that are doing this on a daily basis. That's all I want to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you all for being here tonight, and please share the congratulations to all of your colleagues. We have board recognition, You've Got the Edge Employee of the Month, Ms. Nib.
Good evening. We are excited to celebrate our first 2024-2025 You've Got the Edge Employees of the Month for September. Two awards are given each month during the school year to employees who exemplify one or more of the district's core values. They are awarded with customized OUSD-branded gifts, gift cards from the school's first federal credit union, and also a gift card from the Orange Unified Public Schools Foundation. Additionally, their portraits will be displayed in the external display case right outside the boardrooms. So this evening, we have a video to introduce and highlight each of our September honorees.
I am very proud to congratulate our You've Got the Edge Employees of the Month for September 2024. First, we have the honor of surprising Haley Cody, teacher at Handy Elementary School. Principal Erica Crone had this to say about Haley. Mrs. Cody exemplifies each of our core values. She is an influential leader on campus, spreading avid to every classroom. She is a cheerleader for our school and our teachers, and would do anything to help a colleague. Mrs. Cody is one of our Green Team advisors, a club that gardens and recycles and helps students learn about protecting our precious earth.
Thank you so much for the congratulations. I feel incredibly thankful to be a part of Handy Elementary School in the Orange Unified School District. I feel like the people here and our students really shape us to be the people that we are, and I want to do a big shout-out to all of the students at Handy Elementary School and to all of the teachers and our administrator, Erica Crone, who leads us and sets an incredible example for us daily, and I learn something new from my students every day. So I just want to say a big thank you to the team and to all of the collaboration that we do.
Next, we have the honor of surprising Alex Chavez, Information Systems Specialist in the Technology Services Department. Tam Nguyen, Chief Technology Officer, shared the following about Alex. Few individuals better embody the spirit of excellence in customer service than Alex Chavez. Over the past three years, Alex has consistently supported the district through every challenge with a calm, composed demeanor that helps reduce stress in difficult situations. One of our favorite sayings is, "Technology is the easy part; the key is knowing how to support people," and Alex naturally excels at this. Whether it's leading a complicated install or facilitating a training, Alex has been a steady, calming presence in an often chaotic environment.
Yeah, it's a great privilege to be here at Orange Unified School District. I'm really lucky to work with such great coworkers, and I'm really just honored to be recognized as Employee of the Month.
Congratulations again to both Haley Cody and Alex Chavez. Thank you for your unwavering dedication and commitment to our students in the Orange Unified School District.
Thank you so much, and congratulations to Ms. Cody and Mr. Chavez. We have our board recognition of students, staff, and community, and I would like to begin with Trustee Erickson.
I just want to welcome our student board members, and I had the opportunity and pleasure of meeting Ms. Tanara this week from Canyon as well, and we're really looking forward to working with you. You serve in just an incredibly important position in being the voice for your individual campuses and your student body and really giving us the opportunity to have your voices heard. So we're really looking forward. Every year, I say you have big shoes to fill, but listening to your bios, you're going to be just fine. So we're really excited to work with you. And I just want to thank and congratulate our Saravilla students, and thank you for the work that you did. That's really exciting to be honored by the President of the United States, so congratulations. And that's all I have for right now.
You, Trustee Ortega.
I just wanted to mention let's always keep in our hearts, you know, the families and everybody impacted by 9/11 for, except the young folks. You can go back and recall exactly where you were at the time it did occur, so please keep that in your mind. And for the families in Georgia for the occurrence that happened, I always say, you know, let's continue to keep vigilant, aware of your surroundings. I'm glad we're moving forward with continuous training in that manner to prepare our staff in an array of different, whether it's heat-related, whether it's, you know, active shooter, whatever happens to be, but we're at least continuing that training for our employees, so that's what I'm really grateful for, that we're moving forward in that direction. So I just want to say that, and basically, we're off to a good start of the school year. We're looking forward to all the different activities that are going to be moving forward, and it's going to be exciting. You know, all the sports are coming forward, football seasoning gear, volleyball, you know, baseball, everything's coming forward, so I don't think it's the time to bring it up. I'll bring it up at the end, which it's a positive, it's not going to be any negative. So I just want to say it's going to be reference AEDs, so it's a positive thing. So anyway, I don't want to waste anymore, but I just want to say thank you all. Look forward to OUSD continuing to improve and being fiscally responsible, so thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Ortega. Trustee Pelly.
Thank you. I just kind of want to echo some of the same things and welcome our student board members. I'm looking forward to working with you and hearing your resumes. I agree, it's nothing like what I did when I was a senior. I'm glad you guys don't see my resume from my senior year, but you're so busy and involved in your community and your school, and the fact that you're taking more time to serve, further serve your school, community, that's really commendable. So thank you for what you're going to be doing this year, I'm looking forward to it. And the Saravilla awards, that was really fun. Part of the perks of my job is that I get to sometimes give awards to former students, and these were my big babies. I call them babies because, you know, they're all taller than me, but really proud just of the dual immersion program in general and how it's continuing all the way through junior high and also through Villa Park. So that's really exciting. And I wanted to give an extra shout-out to our translators and interpreters because what they do is really so important. I've probably mentioned before that my grandparents had a language barrier and raised nine kids without being able to speak to their teachers or anyone, and we didn't have this kind of thing, you know, and the fact that we have you and all the things you do, just translating documents and interpreting and IP meetings where the language is so specific, I know how much work goes into it. And then those times when people just call you and go, "Can you answer this phone call, please?" You know, spur-of-the-moment kind of things, but we really do appreciate you, so I'm glad that we're acknowledging you specifically for that. And other than that, thank you to the teachers and staffs that had to deal with the smoke because one rainy day is tough, especially with the littles, and I know this was a really tough week, so thank you, everybody at the sites. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Pelly. Trustee Masaki.
Thank you. I also would like to welcome the school board, student school board members. We are very excited to be working with you and getting to know you better. To everyone else, thank you so much for being here and welcome back. I am so happy that we're experiencing cooler weather this week, and I'm sure you are all too. Board member visits have been limited at our schools so that our principals and teachers could focus on the start of the school year and, of course, back-to-school nights, so I'd like to thank them all for doing that. I hope to resume school visits shortly, and I thank all the principals, teachers, and staff for welcoming us in advance. I also attended the Noel Canyon Patriots Day event in remembrance of 9/11, that Superintendent Gonzalez referenced. I want to especially acknowledge the parents and the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts that were there. They organized a really special event. This event is close to my heart. My kids attended Noel Canyon when this event first started, and my husband was deployed shortly after, after the tragic 9/11 event, and so for them to do this is very meaningful. Thank you, Principal Strickland, for continuing this tradition. As far, as many of you may know, I serve on the boards of the Orange Unified Council of PTAs, Education Foundation of Anaheim Hills, the Canyon High School Foundation, as well as the Committee of Legislative Coalition. And the reason I mention that is because I've seen how hard they have worked all summer, planning, organizing, and putting in work so that our schools will be successful. The PTA presidents and the PTO presidents, they've all worked so hard, and I want to acknowledge their task and dedication and commitment to our district because we all know that having great volunteers is crucial for a successful district, so thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to September. I want to thank everyone who's been working with not only Superintendent Gonzalez, but his entire leadership team for a successful opening for our school year. I want to thank the power of parents. Specifically, I want to acknowledge Phil Martinez, who's one of the parents that, he's my neighbor, but he also is one of the gentlemen who stepped up with a couple of other parents to help do the crossing guard duties right in front of Palmyra. And it was really important to really be safe to go across those streets. And there are a bunch of people who wanted to help out. Mr. Martinez, on his own, got out there with the nice little vest and the placard. Stop, and people stopped. So I'm very proud of him and thankful for that, and the other parents that were with him as well. Back-to-school season, of course, and so Palmyra and other elementaries. Last week, I was proud to be there, saw what wonderful things they're doing. This week, Yorba, next week, Orange. So I'm very happy to go to each of those. And I want to close by giving a little word to each of the stakeholders, to the students. Students, absorb your learning. Trust me, it pays off. To the parents, I want to thank you for your trust in us. We appreciate you having your students here at Orange Unified. Teachers, just thank you. Lord have mercy, just thank you so much for what you do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Glass.
So perfect, thank you, Dr. Glass, for reporting back, as well as the Board of Education. I am extremely excited that this is the first board meeting for the upcoming school year. And we have a lot of updates at Villa Park High School. So I believe on September 7th, we had back-to-school night. It was a major success. Hundreds of students and their parents came by to pick up their honor roll certificate, which we were eligible for if you had above a 3.5 GPA. And we also had lots and lots of good food. So we had a bunch of food trucks there as well. This week, we also had a city e-bike meeting at the Villa Park High School Library. Dozens of students, parents, and residents came to inform themselves on responsible e-bike riding. And I'd like to extend my greatest gratitude, my apologies, to the City of Villa Park and our Orange County Sheriff's Department. We also had our Hello Dance, which also, which opens up the school year and was held on September 6th from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. It was held in the PAC, which was kind of a contrast to previous years where it was held on the quad. And if, for those who don't know, the Hello Dance is a fundraiser for our cheer program at Villa Park High School. On September 19th, from 6:00 to 7:00, Villa Park High School is also hosting a college application in the Science Building Room. I believe it is free. If you'd like to attend, there is an RVSP on our social media. You can visit our Instagram at VP Spartan. We also have our game against Ayala High School at Fred Kelly Stadium. And the theme in commemoration of the people who lost their lives on Patriots Day on Wednesday, we read white and blue. And speaking as to what our ASP did for Patriots Day on 9/11, we had a letter drive so students can come by and write letters to active-duty soldiers. I know our National Honor Society also hosted a letter drive as well from Monday through Friday. And so it was a great success. We had hundreds of letters that will be sent to our active-duty soldiers through the Ethnic Sea Letter to a Million Thanks Organization. And lastly, I am also proud to say that I now do city reports for the City of Villa Park and their city meetings, which is typically held on the last Tuesday of the fourth week. I was able to do that on the 24th, where Mayor Tim Jones was presiding over the meeting. Thank you so much, and that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. And we're excited that you're able to share district news with the City of Villa Park, similar to our other two board members who do it for the City of Orange. Ms. Lopez?
Hello, my name is Nadia Flores, and I am very excited to be here tonight. As mentioned before, I am this year's Orange High School Student Board Member. A little bit about Orange High. Right now, we just opened up our new building, our new main office. It's very exciting to have a new building on our campus. A little bit about the events going on at school. Tomorrow, we will be hosting our honor roll celebration for the students who excelled during the spring semester of last year. So any sophomores, juniors, and seniors will be recognized tomorrow. And yeah, pretty much, I'm just very excited to be here, and I'm very honored to sit beside you all. And I'm just looking forward to a good year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, hello, my name is Kemeni Kihana Espinoza, and I am this year's Student Board Member Representative for Elmo Lina High School. Elmo kicked off their year with their Hello Dance and Hello Assembly the beginning of the year. We just had our honor roll assembly yesterday, commemorating our vanguards with their academic achievements of those who had a 3.5 GPA or higher. And today, we are also in full motion with our sports, with our football game being hosted at Fred Kelly Stadium, with our theme being in honor of one of the wife of our, one of our librarians and coaches on campus, Ms. Lisa Tefua, for her passing recently. So we have our football game tonight in celebration of her, which is something that we're very honored to do. And yeah, I'm very excited to serve you guys and work alongside the board and my fellow Student Board Members this year. And I'm very excited for what this year has to come.
Thank you all for sharing. Now on to the approval of the minutes for August 15th, 2024. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Jinx.
Okay, I think I heard Trustee Glass first. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Erickson. Any discussion? None? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 601. Now moving on to public comment, Trustee Erickson.
Yes, we have a total of six public comments. Only one on an agenda item, which is 7A. And then the rest are non-agenda items.
Okay, please call the speaker for 7A.
Joelynn Lang.
Hello, Board and Superintendent. Thank you for allowing me to come up and talk to you today. I just wanted to say that I hope you appreciate, I know you probably do, all of the work the classified staff does at the schools. I have had the opportunity to be doing some volunteering at my children's school recently. And we use so much technology. I know our IT and librarian are busy 24/7 trying to just keep the classrooms running. And the teachers could not do their jobs without them. And so it's good to see them getting some pay recognition that's coming up. I'm hoping also that the district will take into account all the extra work that has changed in what people are tasked to do after COVID kind of changed how things work in the schools. And I just want to make sure we appreciate all the things that happen behind the scenes that we don't see at teacher conferences, that we don't see when we're doing the open houses, but all those people that make sure the school runs and our children get the education that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. 7A, tentative agreement between the Orange Unified School District and the California School Employees Association. I will pass it on to Ms. Snib.
Absolutely, thank you. But President Page, members of the Board, Superintendent Gonzalez, Cabinet, and Community, I'd like to introduce Attorney John Radrick from the firm AALRR, who has served as the district's agency negotiator for negotiations to speak on this item.
On the agenda for ratification this evening is the tentative agreement between the district and CSEA, which concluded reopener negotiations for the 2324 school year. The costs of this agreement have been calculated. They've been forwarded to the county, and the county has certified that this agreement is fiscally responsible. And with that, we would recommend that the board ratify the tentative agreement between the district and CSEA, which concluded reopener negotiations for the 2324 school year.
Okay, are there any questions or comments before we vote? None? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Erickson. Is there a second? Thank you, Trustee Yamazaki. Any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 601. Now 7B, public hearing, initial proposal from Orange Unified School District to the California School Employees Association, Chapter 67, for 2024-2025 contract negotiations. Mr. Gonzalez, Ms. Snib?
So we'll have Mr. Radrick present on this item as well.
Okay, thank you.
So there are two public hearings on the agenda this evening. The first is the district's initial proposal for 2425 negotiations with CSEA, to be followed by a hearing on CSEA's initial proposal for 2425. The Educational Employment Relations Act requires that before negotiations can commence, the district needs to hold a public hearing on each initial proposal. So with that, we'd recommend that the district start with the initial proposal on the district's, the public hearing on the district's initial proposal. And the purpose of the hearing is to ensure that the public gets an opportunity to comment on the proposal or the process before the parties commence negotiations.
Thank you. The Board of Education will now hold a public hearing to receive input on the district's initial proposal to the California School Employees Association, CSEA, for contract negotiations. I will now close the regular meeting and open the public hearing at 7:58. Are there any speakers wishing to address the board?
You do not have to have turned in a blue card.
Okay, I will now close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting at 7:59 p.m. No action will be taken, as this was a public hearing to receive public comment. Thank you.
And the next item is to hold a public hearing on CSEA's initial proposal, again, to give the public an opportunity to comment on the proposal or the process prior to the commencement of negotiations.
Okay, so the Board of Education will now hold a public hearing to receive input on the California School Employees Association, CSEA's, initial proposal to the district for contract negotiations. And I will now close the regular meeting and open the public hearing at 8:00 p.m. Are there any speakers wishing to address the board? Okay, hearing done, I will now close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting at 8:01 p.m. And no action will be taken, as this was a public hearing to receive public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now on to D, charter school renewal petition, El Rancho Charter School.
Thank you, President Page. We will have Davina Harden, attorney for AALRR, come and present on this item.
Good evening, President Page, members of the Board, Superintendent Gonzalez, staff and community. On June 17th, El Rancho Charter School submitted a request for renewal of its charter as required by the Charter Schools Act. On July 18th, the Board of Education held a public hearing on the El Rancho renewal charter. And tonight's agenda item is for the Board to take action on the request for renewal. The Charter Schools Act has been revised since the last time the district board considered a charter renewal request. Now, as an additional criterion for renewal, charter schools are divided into high, middle, and low-performing or dashboard-alternative status schools based on their academic performance indicators from the California School Dashboard. The applicable renewal standards and the available length of the renewal term are dependent on this categorization. El Rancho has been designated by the California Department of Education's Charter School Performance Category list as a high-performing charter school for purposes of this renewal request. And so the available renewal term is between five and seven years. High-performing charter schools are only required to update their petitions to include reasonably comprehensive descriptions of all new legal requirements that apply to the charter school since it was last approved or renewed, and as necessary to reflect the charter school's current program. The chartering authority shall not deny a high-performing charter school pursuant to the dashboard performance criterion. The chartering authority may renew a high-performing charter school for a term of five to seven years, with the length of the term in the chartering authority's discretion. The district and El Rancho also currently have in place a memorandum of understanding. And by its terms, that MOU remains in full force and effect during the period of any renewal of the El Rancho charter unless and until the parties enter into a replacement MOU or specifically agree that the MOU is terminated. The terms of the MOU serve in part to describe and define El Rancho's current program and operations, including as part of its required updates to reflect its current practices. Therefore, the renewal charter specifically refers to the MOU as defining and describing additional terms of El Rancho's operations. So the MOU was considered, along with the renewal charter, as part of the renewal submission. District staff and legal counsel have reviewed and analyzed El Rancho's renewal charter. And in accordance with the requirements of Education Code Section 47605, district staff's recommendations and recommended findings on the renewal were published 15 days prior to tonight's meeting, which was on August 28th. And based upon the review and analysis, and considering the standards and requirements applicable to El Rancho's renewal as a high-performing charter school, district staff have found that the renewal charter meets the criteria for renewal as outlined in 47605 and 47607 of the Education Code, and have recommended that the charter be renewed for seven years as detailed in the published staff analysis.
Ms. Harden?
Now, Ms. Harden, following your remarks now, there's opportunity for El Rancho to come forward and make a presentation.
Yes, they're entitled to the same process and time as the district had.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Page, Superintendent Gonzalez, distinguished members of the OUSD Board of Education and members of the community. It is an honor to stand before you today as we celebrate the recommendation of a seven-year renewal of our charter. This milestone represents more than just a continuation of our work. It is a reaffirmation of our shared commitment to the success of our students and our school. First, I would like to express my sincere thanks to Superintendent Gonzalez. Your leadership and collaboration throughout this process has been instrumental. The positive partnership we have fostered with the district has allowed us to work towards our common goal, providing every student with the tools they need to succeed. The transparent communication, shared vision, and trust between us have made this renewal not just a formality, but a celebration of what we can achieve together. To the OUSD Board of Education, thank you for your diligence and dedication, your commitment to ensuring that all students in the district have access to high-quality education is the driving force behind this renewal. We deeply appreciate your belief in our mission and your continued support as we strive to make the difference in the lives of our students. I also want to take a moment to thank our incredible staff, our teachers, administrators, and support personnel. This charter renewal is a reflection of your passion, hard work, and relentless dedication to the students we serve. You have created a learning environment where students not only excel academically, but also grow as confident, compassionate, and responsible individuals. Your efforts have transformed the lives of our students, and I am so proud to work alongside you. As we move forward with this renewed charter, we will continue working with Superintendent Gonzalez, the OUSD Board, our staff, parents, and the community to create an environment of excellence and opportunity. Thank you for your time.
President Page, it's recommended that the Board of Education take action to adopt the proposed resolution approving the renewal petition for El Rancho Charter School pursuant to Education Code Sections 47605 and 47607, for a seven-year term to be effective July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2032.
Mr. Superintendent Gonzalez, is there a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll move it, for a second.
Okay. Trustee Yamazaki, second with Trustee Ortega. Any discussion?
I just have a question. And congratulations, happy to vote for it. But my question is just on the MOUs. I know that periodically you go back and review them, because seven years is obviously a long time. How does that process work if you decide you need to reconvene because something's happened?
I believe that this MOU, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. I believe that it includes a provision specifically saying that it can be reviewed every year, but it also can just be reviewed at any time. And typically, at the time of a renewal, especially because the law has changed, we will probably meet with El Rancho and talk about things that might need to be updated and clarified.
Right, because legal, I mean, I'm thinking legal things change over seven years, so.
And especially, there was a major change in the law during this time. And just as long as I'm here, I also just, I know that there's a motion on the floor. And as a reminder, there is a And as a reminder, there is a proposed resolution that you would be adopting. So I just wanted to have clarity of whether the motion included the adoption of the proposed resolution.
So I didn't mention it, but we want to add that to the motion to include the resolution.
Yes, if, if that is the will of the motion maker and the second.
Oh, that's fine.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a quick comment, if you don't mind.
Okay.
All right, thank you. First, if I'd like to thank El Rancho community for being here. I recognize a lot of faces. Although El Rancho operates independently and has their own board, we consider them and our other charter schools family. And we look forward to furthering our strong partnership and collaboration. And as Principal Walker said, mentioned, our shared vision, so congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any additional comments or questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 601. Congratulations. 7E, 2023, 24, un-audited actials, financial report, and 2024, 2025 revised budget. Ms. Hogan.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, distinguished Board members, Superintendent Gonzalez, cabinet members, and community partners with us here tonight, and those of you joining us virtually. Tonight, Ms. Bolzaro will be presenting to you a summary of the un-audited actials financial report for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. These un-audited actials represent the cumulative financial activity for the fiscal year, and the numbers are subject to the annual audit. Therefore, the numbers presented tonight may change once our annual audit is completed. If those changes do occur, they will be presented to the Board as part of our annual audit. And I will now turn it over to Ms. Bolzaro.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna, this presentation is really focusing mainly on the general fund because that's the main operating fund for the districts. And tonight, we are gonna go over the general fund revenues, expenditures, and including ending fund balance at year end and comparing to estimate in June. And also components of ending fund balance and next steps in the process. So unrestricted general fund, we estimated at June 286 million of revenue. And we received 2.6 million higher than our estimate at 289 million. Expenditures estimated at 244.5 million and spent 258, which is about 13.7 million higher than the estimates. And that is mainly because of the approved salary increases as of June 30, 2024. The ending fund balance, as you can see, has increased by 30.9 million, ending at 151 million at this year end. So we have various restricted programs, and that including deferred revenue programs such as title programs, one-time revenues for, like, such as SIR programs. And there are programs who are allowed to spend more than one year within their timeline, for example, learning recovery block grants or CTU programs. So based on that restricted programs, the estimates also change. And as you can see from this slide, that the revenues and expenditures for restricted programs both have decreased from the estimate significantly. And that's because of the different nature of the, you know, programs. And so deferred programs that has not been spent this year will be carried over next year to spend on those. And also SIR, as we all know, that SIR is the, one of the last COVID funding that we have received at this district. And the deadline is approaching very fast. And so we are really monitoring the SIR spending, and we are on the target right now. And restricted fund balance, as you can see, also has increased by 3 million, ending at 65 million at this year end. Combined unrestricted and restricted revenues and expenditures, both have been decreased, and that's translated into the higher reserve or higher ending fund balance. And as you can see from this slide, this 33.9 million has increased ending fund balance for up to 216.6 million for this year end. So out of 216.6 million, we are setting aside some funds for inventory and petty cash, also setting aside restricted program balances for 65 million, and assigning funds for the carryover programs, and also committing funds per Board's approval that was done last June Board meeting, in addition to reserving the 3% of our required reserve for emergencies. Fiscal services, updating budget constantly based on the revised budget assumptions and budget information that we receive from state or any local agencies. Business services will be updating the budget stabilization plan for the next five years for the revenue enhancement, expenditure reductions, and one-time utilization of the reserves. And we will be meeting with extended cabinet, including Ed Services and Human Resources, to go over that and strategize that. And all those information will be included and presented to Board at the December Board Meeting at first interim report. And, and before I conclude my presentation tonight, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize the efforts and hard work that the Fiscal Services team and the leaders have put in to produce this year-end closing and also this report. So I really am thankful for that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bolzaro. And before we open it up for questions, I just want to, once again, thank Ms. Bolzaro and the whole fiscal team because closing is a very critical time period for, it's all boots on the ground and making sure that we assure that all of the costs that were for the 23-24 year are part of that un-audited actials information to get us close. But as mentioned before, if there is something through our audit that we have to change in terms of our numbers, that is something that is brought forward. But it's also a very important reporting period because it does send the baseline for our actual spending in years to come and really helps with our multi-year projection. So a very important report for that. And now we will open it up for any questions.
Are there any questions?
I don't have a question, just a comment.
Go ahead.
I just want to thank you, Ms. Bolzaro, for all your hard work and always for being so gracious in having us thank your team and acknowledge them name by name. That is really important, and that shows good leadership, and we thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Just you Ortega?
I was just gonna move it.
Okay. Is there a second? Trustee Glass, seconds? Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 601. Thank you. I think you continue on with F, Power School Group, and predictive enrollment analytics.
Yes, thank you. As you may recall, last month, we brought to you key ideas under the SMART Plan. And under that plan, we had two ideas that included our surplus property and our 7-Eleven Committee. We wanted to bring this item as an action item in a way to keep the Board informed and providing explanation of some of the activities and approvals we're going to be asking for in order to reach the goals under our SMART Plan. So while we don't have a presentation, I will turn it over to our Senior Director of Facilities Development and Planning to explain more how Power School will help assist us with our 7-Eleven and our surplus property that we're aiming towards with the goals for, through our SMART Plan. Ms. Vasquez.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Page, distinguished members of the Board, Superintendent Gonzalez, cabinet members, guests, and our virtual guests as well. As we continue our efforts regarding surplus property and the 7-Eleven Committee, it is essential to discuss the tools and strategies that will support our goals effectively. I would like to share additional information on Power School, a key resource we are considering to enhance our approach. Power School conducts a comprehensive community demographic analysis and provides a 10-year student enrollment projections organized by grade level and boundaries. Their integrated approach combines advanced enrollment forecasting with demographic data, school capacity analysis, housing development data, and professional expertise, all supported by state-of-the-art technology. One of the standout features of Power School solution is their proprietary geographic information system. This system includes interactive tools that capture, analyze, and present detailed demographic data models. It enables us to evaluate both individual site and district-wide enrollment trends, as well as housing capacity. Overall, a detailed understanding of enrollment trends is essential for making strategic decisions that align the school's needs with potential land, surplus land opportunities, thereby ensuring that educational objectives are not compromised. Thank you.
So again, we just want to keep the Board informed of the different steps that we are taking as we're moving forward towards some of these goals. And as Ms. Vasquez shared, it will give us better data than what we currently are using through our Davis demographics and getting more precise information regarding our enrollment trends as well as our capacity. We still will be using Davis because of some of the services that they, that we're currently using, especially with the trustee areas and different things like that in terms of the information we have. However, we do feel that Power School, and if eventually we can move all of those services into Power School, that is something that we will be looking at. But for right now, it is a tool that we feel that will better support the services and the data that we need to be able to move forward with these projects.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I do have one question because you were talking about trends. And being that we're an open enrollment district, would we be able to analyze students who go to their school of choice? So meaning that they don't go to their neighborhood schools, they potentially go to a different program, and we would be able to see geographically how our students are moving within our district?
Exactly, and that's a huge distinction between Davis demographics and Power School. Power School does capture open enrollment, both inter and intra.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion? Thank you, trustee Ortega, is there a second? Thank you, trustee Pelley.
Real quick, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Have we started or dusted off the plan with the Irvine Company?
I am not.
I know, I'm throwing you a curve because you've only been here a very short time.
I am not aware of that, but I will look into that.
Because the early inception of the development many years ago was to build a K8 school up in the Hill, but that was based on around 5,000 to 6,000 homes. But now it's roughly about 1,100 homes. Has staff even started to start negotiating with Irvine Company in the sense of potentially building the K8 after all? Or even a K6, but a K8 at the time, we're, we had negotiated that. But again, it stopped because of, you know, the recession and all that stuff. So I would suggest going back to the old documents. I'm sure we probably have them somewhere and, you know, blow off the dust. And we start negotiating because they're already starting to lay out the stakes, and they're gonna start grading pretty soon. So we, we need to get involved like yesterday as far as negotiating for a school up there with those 1,100 homes.
And I think maybe Ms. Vasquez can just comment on the general capacity that this program has to consider housing developments in the area.
Yeah, but I mean, we have to negotiate with Irvine, though.
Correct, and that is a component of the Power School enrollment projection, the trends. They do take a look at the residential development, and they do assign a student generation rate based on the type of development, and that is used and incorporated into the projections.
Yeah, because I think we're looking at about 10-acre K8 school. So I don't know what that's gonna translate to right now, but if, somewhere, you know, obviously, they're gonna have to make the decision. But we need to jump into that negotiations and start knocking on Irvine's door like immediately to see what we're gonna build up there as far as school site.
Thank you for the information, we'll look into it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other additional comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 601. Thank you very much for the information. 7G, public hearing on the sufficiency of textbooks, instructional materials, and science lab equipment, and the adoption of the Board Resolution Number 042425. Ms. Rodriguez.
I'm back, I'm here representing Lisa Green. So good evening again to our Board President and Board Member Superintendent Gonzalez, our cabinet, our staff, and community members. The Williams Settlement sets a specific timeline for districts in certifying the sufficiency of textbooks, instructional materials, and science lab equipment for grades nine through 12. The settlement requires the hearing to be held prior to the end of the eighth week after the first day pupils attend school. Education Code Section 60119 specifies that the governing boards of school districts establish steps and procedures and take appropriate action to ensure the availability of textbooks and instructional materials on a yearly basis. The Office of Curriculum and Instruction has determined that all grades are sufficient with the number of textbooks, instructional materials in the areas of mathematics, science, English language arts, English language development, and the visual and performing arts. In addition, the availability of laboratory sciences equipment was found sufficient for all science courses offered in grades nine through 12. The district has posted, as required by law, a notice of public hearing 10 days in advance of this evening's hearing, and the resolution satisfies the requirements of the timeline for implementation of the Williams Settlement legislation. It is recommended that the Board of Education hold the public hearing, adopt Resolution Number 04-24-25, and certify to the California Department of Education that the district has complied with the requirement of Education Code Section 60119.
Thank you. I will now close the regular meeting and open the public hearing at 8:25 PM. Are there any speakers regarding the sufficiency of textbooks, instructional materials, and science lab equipment? You don't need a blue card to, to come up. Okay. I will now close the public hearing and reopen the regular Board meeting at 8:26 PM. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 04-24-25 to certify the California Department of Education that the district has complied with the requirements of the Education Code?
I'll move it.
Thank you, trustee Yamazaki, is there a second? Thank you, trustee Glass. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 601. Thank you. 7H, proposed revisions to Board Policies and Bylaws, second reading and approval.
Thank you. The district board policies and bylaws are reviewed and updated periodically as new state and federal laws and regulations are enacted. The proposed revisions for the following board policies are presented for second reading and approval.
Thank you, Superintendent Gonzalez. Are there any additional revisions to this list? Go ahead, trustee Erickson.
Sure. So just, I just kind of want to remind everybody, we are passing, I mean, one of the, the policies that we're looking at tonight is 4140 and 4240, which reminds us that the Board has the final responsibility for establishing policies of our school district. And too, the superintendent and staff have the responsibility of carrying out the policies that we establish. So we really do have a responsibility to make sure that we are reviewing these in a way that I think, in my experience, hasn't always happened. We get these giant packs of, of policies, and we may, we accept, you know, the changes to the law, but we don't necessarily look to the substance of the policies. And it may be that we, as a, as a Board, since a lot of these policies haven't changed in probably 50 years, we really do have an obligation to just look at them, make sure that they align with what we as a Board in 2024. make sure that they align with what we, as a board, in 2024 think is appropriate. And so because of the way that we do this, it's kind of like a mass amount of information at any given. I don't know if the rest of you feel overwhelmed, but when I'm going through them, I'm overwhelmed. But I have gone through at least the 900, 9,000s and made a few changes, some of which I suggested last month. And I spoke to Mr. Gonzalez about some of those. I did have, we had a couple of extra little changes that I hope the board won't mind because they're more kind of type, almost like typos sort of type thing. But for 9124, I asked that an additional "or designee" be added to the third sentence underneath contacting legal counsel, where it says, "In addition, the Board President." And then I asked that we added "or designee", just to be consistent with the rest of the policy. And so for 9220, which is governing board elections on page four, so it's 922 subsection D, the first paragraph says, "Candidates for the board may submit a candidate statement to the election official for inclusion in the voter's pamphlet. Candidate statements shall be limited to no more than," and this original version says 200 words, but I have requested that we change that to 400 words. That's been the pattern of practice for candidates. Candidates pay for their own candidate statements. It doesn't have any cost to the district. But that's always been really the standard number. So I ask that we change that to 400 rather than 200. I don't know. Okay. On Board Bylaw 9320, Meetings and Notices, there is a section. Is that the right one? Hold on. Sorry. This is how detailed these things are. They're just crazy, and everything's crossed out and highlighted. And there is a section in here that talks about confidential communications. Is that, am I at the right one? 9321. That's what it is, 9321. Okay. On 9321B, it talks about, "A board member shall not disclose confidential information received in closed session unless the board authorizes the disclosure of that information or the information has been publicly reported by the district." And that's Government Code 54963, which is also called the Brown Act. I wanted to propose that we actually add language from the code section that defines what confidential information is and what confidential information isn't. So there's specific language in the code that I think adds clarity to this policy. And so I was going to ask the superintendent to add that. And then we can either approve it maybe at the next board meeting, if that's okay.
I think we have two options. Either we can clean this one and present it with the new language in there, or just understanding that that already exists. You know, in the statute, we could just pull it in. The board can also just agree to add it, and then we'll just pull the information and include it.
Is there preference from the board?
Yeah, I think we should add it.
I think we should just add it because the language is coming from a policy that's already in place, a law that's in place, so we just add it.
It's just language from the statute.
Yes.
So is it okay if I give Mr. Gonzalez that language from the statute?
And we can just approve it, knowing that he's going to add it, and we won't have to revisit it.
And myself and Ms. Erickson went through all of these changes, and I concur with the changes that she's suggesting.
Okay. And then the last request I had made last month was on Bylaw 9323.2. And it was a request that, which has been added to this bylaw, that any license that exceeds four years require a 2/3 majority vote. And when I came up with four years, that was, I'm not going to say a random date, but it was a date that I think was appropriate, given the fact that anybody on the board could be gone after four years. And so I think it's important that we are cognizant of the fact that there are board members that come after us, and maybe we shouldn't tie their hands unless we're really sure about the benefit of the license. So I just wanted to make sure that that four years was okay with everybody else.
Are there any comments to respond?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Yamazaki. Your mic doesn't work.
It doesn't work?
Now it does.
Fine with it, too.
Thank you.
I'm fine with it, too.
And then just as far as all of the 4100s go, I'm going to be honest with you. I don't feel like I had a super great opportunity to really dig through them in a way that I would have liked to. And that's not the fault of staff or anything. It's just the massive amount of information. So that's, I don't know how anybody else feels, but I almost would like to have this brought back, those brought back at the meeting on the 26th for a second reading, so that if we do have any changes, I don't know if anybody else has looked at them, but they are, you know, they are philosophical, a lot of them. And so the philosophical stuff, I do think, is important that us, as board members, really look at and consider to make sure that that's consistent with, you know, whatever it is. Because if we say we would like, you know, I don't know, let's just say, hiring practices to look a certain way, or we want to make sure that our pool of candidates is as large as possible, that should probably be in our policies so that our staff knows what the policy is going forward. And I don't know that I've really had a chance to do that, and I don't know how anybody else feels in terms of feeling really confident that this has our stamp of involvement, I guess, so to speak, or our own philosophy in there. So I don't know if that appeals to anyone, but...
Well, Trustee Erickson, I'll definitely open it to other board members if they have additional comments on those before we decide to postpone them to the next meeting. But also, this is a lot of information, and our bylaws and our policies are used as a guidebook for our, you know, superintendent, our cabinet, and our staff. And so the clearer that we can be in what we pass, I think, would be only beneficial to our team. In addition to that, as we've been in our ad hoc governance team, we've also discussed the importance of subcommittees. And potentially, this is a subcommittee that could be created as opposed to having hundreds of policies changing only when, like, the law changes, but also looking critically at any potential policies that would need to be brought up in front of the board, and that would be the duty of that committee. But unless there's any additional comments, I think I agree that we can push the board policies 4,000s over to the following board meeting. I see agreement from Trustee Glass.
Would we table it, or would we, how would we conduct this or transact this?
We can make a motion to move board bylaws and then list those numbers.
Okay. Oh, ISO move.
We, I'm sorry, we could pass the 9,300s since we've gone through those, and then just move the 4,100s over an additional two weeks. Is that...
Well, there's 9,100 and 9,200s as well.
Right, so we would name these specific ones.
Specific ones you want to pass today?
I think it's the 9,000s.
All the 9,000s that are listed here.
Oh, I'm sorry. 9,000s.
All right, thank you.
So I accept the friendly amendment.
What?
No, Roberts. I accept the friendly amendment to accept the 9,000s and to move the 4,000s to our next meeting on the 26th of September.
Can we make a friendly, friendly? Friendly, friendly to just say at the subsequent, at the subsequent meeting, following meeting?
Correct.
You mean the next meeting?
Next meeting.
In case we don't meet on the 26th?
There you go.
Okay.
Just putting it out there.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Trustee Pelley. Any additional comments or questions?
Well, I just want to show the public that this is all the board policies that we have to review in the last month, so it is a lot of dense information. And this is on top of the packet that we had for just this week alone.
Right, these are just for this section. And now there's another 15 in the next section that are multiple pages, and then there'll be probably another 15 at the next board meeting.
I think there's more than that.
I see two, our two future board members. That probably scares you.
I think we're in the 30s for the Ed Services one. So, you know, hearing the comments, we may, you know, even want to split that into thirds.
Yeah, I think however we can split it, and I also think it might be nice as board members, before we even have board subcommittees, is maybe we can informally agree that, you know, like, I'll take the first three, somebody else takes the next three, somebody else takes the next three, so that we don't have, it's really difficult to have seven people focus on 15 policies. It would be nice if we could, like, kind of split them up.
Make recommendations.
Right, I don't know if the rest of you would be willing to do that. Maybe we can address that, since this one's only a few that are left in the 4,000s. Maybe we can talk about that for the 30, for the 3,000, or for the business.
Right, we do have a motion on the floor. So we can vote and then discuss that.
Okey-dokey.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 601.
Is there, sorry, is there anything that, if we don't vote on it today, that's going to impact?
Judging by Ms. Nib's nod that she gave me, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Okay. So back to Trustee Erickson's comment about asking for volunteers to divide the policies. Do you all trust me to, if you volunteer, to divide it and then let you know in the Friday packet who has which policies for the upcoming one? I see nods. Okay, thank you. All right, 7I. Proposal for Former Board Members' Participation in Graduation Ceremonies. Trustee Ortega.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to say thank you to the Board President for allowing this to be on the agenda and to be able to discuss it, seeing that, you know, this would apply to potentially a few individuals, either now or in the future. And so it'd be a consideration of this board to accept a proposal as it states that the Board of Education consider approving former board members' participation in graduation ceremonies by presenting a diploma cover, as normally the board does every year at graduation, to their graduating dependents. And so if I'm allowed, Madam President, to be able to, if you're going to open it to questions or to move it, or however you want to. Okay. Then I'd like to move this item for approval.
Okay, is there a second? Trustee Glass, seconds. Are there any questions or comments?
Well, are we approving, are we approving it? Or are we considering the proposal? Just the way it's worded is a little bit strange.
Yeah, I think the option was for discussion, but I think the motion, as I understand it, is to approve it. Correct, Mr. Ortega?
Correct.
Okay.
Would this be a policy revision, a policy, or just...?
No, it would just be something that stands alone. I asked whether or not there needs to be a resolution or have, and the answer was no.
Okay. I think it's a good idea. It's an honor to be able to do this for your own child and being that, you know, your service on the board here is important, and I think that's the least we could do.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 601.
I just want to thank the Board of Education for their support on this.
Thank you, Trustee Ortega. 8A Wellness Centers Presentation. And this will be presented by Mr. Angel and Mrs. Nelson.
Okay. Good evening, Board President Ms. Page, esteemed school board members, Mr. Gonzalez and Cabinet. My name is Eddie Angel, and I serve as the Executive Director of Student Community Services. Tonight, alongside Christine Nelson, one of our three incredible coordinators at SCS, we will present the current state of wellness spaces across our district. We will share the benefits these spaces offer, testimonials, and outline the proposed next steps for expanding and enhancing our wellness spaces. Before we begin, I want to highlight Focus Area 3.0, Genuine Wellness and Safety of Our Strategic Plan, which embodies our commitment to fostering a safe and supportive environment of our students. A safe and respectful environment is critical to student success. At Orange Unified, we prioritize getting to know each student by name, face, and story, promoting a culture that nurtures students, staff, and parents emotional safety, health, and well-being. This foundation is critical on the ongoing success of our wellness spaces and our broader efforts to ensure every student thrives. The CDC's Youth Risk Behavior Surveillance Data Summary of Trends Report 2011 through 2021 highlights concerning trends in U.S. high schools' students' mental health. In 2021, over 4 in 10 students reported feeling sad or hopeless. Nearly 1 in 3 experienced poor mental health. More than 1 in 5 seriously considered attempting suicide, and 1 in 10 attempted suicide. The American Psychological Association from January 2023 reports a rise in youth feelings of hopelessness, suicidal thoughts, and behaviors over the past decade. Contributing factors to this mental health crisis include social media impacts, violence, natural disasters, economic struggles, social isolation, and illness. In response to the challenges, schools are increasing their capacity to meet these mental health needs through the following: improved access to mental health resources, enhanced family support, and initiative to restore stability in our students' lives. This comprehensive approach is critical to addressing the ongoing mental health needs among our students. Wellness spaces on school campuses are designed to provide a safe, calming environment where students can de-escalate, reflect, and engage in self-care practices. These spaces support students' mental, emotional, and physical well-being by helping them manage stress, anxiety, and other challenges affecting their learning and health. Please note that medical services are not provided in these wellness spaces. The ultimate goal of wellness spaces is to teach students how to manage their emotions independently, fostering resilience and emotional self-sufficiency. Wellness spaces offer a safe place for students to rest and reset, an opportunity to check in with their counselor or school psychologist who can provide immediate support or refer students to more intensive services like one-on-one counseling or small group interventions. A supportive environment where students can re-engage with their learning, and a space that teaches essential life skills, such as emotional regulation, resilience, and self-management, which benefits all of our students beyond the classroom. which benefits all of our students beyond the classroom. Through collaboration with parents and our community partners, we are working to provide wellness spaces that address the social-emotional needs of our students, empowering them to succeed and thrive both academically and personally.
Wellness spaces on our campuses are a key component of Tier One mental health support. They offer an essential step in prevention and early intervention for, for student mental health to ensure that all students have access to critical resources and supports. According to the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission, proactive efforts in mental health can lead to significantly improved outcomes. This slide shows just some of the positive outcomes that wellness spaces provide. We see here on the slide increased academic performance, higher graduation rates, less time spent in psychiatric hospitals for emergencies, improved behavior in school, improved community, uh, school community, and improved increased student engagement. The following slides will provide images of our district wellness spaces in elementary, middle, and high schools. You will also hear testimonials from an Orange Unified principal, teacher, counselor, and student. First up, we'll hear a video from Principal Erica Crone from Handy Elementary School.
It's always my goal to provide a kind, caring community for our students at Handy, and having a full-time counselor is a big part of that, but now we have the Handy Hangout where students can come, if they're having a bad day, they can come in, if they're having a day where they have a test, they can come in and relax during recess, they can use some of the fidgets or calming toys or color, but it's just a space to feel safe, get to hang out with our counselor who's wonderful, get to be with the other kids, and so far the kids love it, so I'm excited to see how the year progresses with this new Handy Hangout.
Here's an example of wellness spaces in our elementary schools. You can see there's a lot of bright colors, there's tools that help to calm students with and to identify their emotions, we have flexible seating where students can choose from a variety of seating options, we have shelves full of various calming tools like stress balls and squishy animals and fidgets. Up next, we'll hear a testimonial from one of our teachers at Fairhaven Elementary, Sabrina Lewis.
Another really important thing that I think this space provides is self-advocacy, you know, our students, as they grow up, we want them to be able to come to an adult and say, hey, I need help with this, or I would need to talk through this. We want to establish those leadership skills, that ability to communicate. We, over here, have our, you know, college and career-ready walls, like, we're really trying to emphasize that at our school, so, you know, having a space where, yes, they can work through their emotions, but they also have the ability to see, okay, this is also like a vision wall, like, where do I see myself, where do I want to go? And so, you know, when you start to kind of connect those two things, they kind of build a stronger connection within the kids, and that's what we want. We want them to be leaders, we want them to see college and career, careers as something that's totally, like, they can, they can achieve that, and by having it in a safe space like this, it's, makes us feel like, they feel like they can do it, too.
Here are some examples of wellness spaces in our middle schools, so you'll notice nice, neutral, calm colors, flexible, again, comfortable seating, and you really get a sense this is very homey, feels very comfortable, very welcoming to our students. Now we'll hear from Lauren Bartelli, school counselor from Villa Park High School.
So great is being a counselor, it's working with that student, like, through talk and through interpersonal skills that we're developing, when they're in this space and they learn how to self-regulate, they are able to come in and they're able to find something that they can grab to kind of de-escalate and help themselves feel better, that's been a great part of this space, too, is, yes, having a safe person to talk to is a big piece of it, but what do you do, like, you, you know, when you're talking, you need to be able to also self-regulate, so it's nice to see them kind of come out of an office and be able to work and find something to do and then get back to class, so I think that's just been a great part of the space as well.
And here's some examples from the wellness space at Villa Park High School. Again, you'll see those neutral colors, very welcoming environment, options for students to relax and sit and meet with a counselor, meet with a counselor one-on-one or in small groups, whatever the student may need, and the goal, of course, is to rest, reset, and return to class. This last video is from a sixth-grade student who has found the wellness space helpful to her.
How I feel when I leave, so, when I leave, I don't feel the feelings that I've had before, and like, when you're angry, I don't feel angry anymore, because I get, she helps me a lot, and she also, like, when I'm sad, she helps me with that, too, and about other things that will happen, so when I leave, I feel happy and better again.
Oops. So from that last slide, you know, that's our sixth-grade student that we, we showed you, and, and as we've seen from these testimonials and images, these wellness spaces are making a difference in the lives of our students. They provide not only a safe space for emotional support, but also to help build a foundation for resilience and promoting student well-being.
Developing wellness spaces on our campuses is a collective effort that goes beyond the school walls. It requires the support, expertise, and resources from a network of community partners who share our collective mission. On this slide, you will see a list of our community partners. Creating wellness spaces require a shared vision and sustained collaboration. By partnering with our community partners, we can extend our reach, enrich our programs, and ensure every student has the appropriate support. It truly takes more than a village, it takes a united community. We can create safe, supportive environments where our students can grow, learn, and thrive together. So what are the next steps for our wellness spaces? We must first focus on the critical areas that would drive their long-term success as we continue our systematic approach to expanding wellness spaces and enhancing student well-being. Here are the next steps to ensure growth and how we plan to sustain these wellness spaces. Number one, systems, we will develop standardized guidelines for the consistent expansions of these wellness spaces across our district. We will create strategies to optimize staffing options, and we will provide appropriate training for staff to manage these wellness spaces to address our students' needs. We will also establish clear guidelines to appropriate furnishings in the wellness spaces. And lastly, under systems, we will implement systems to assess the impact of our wellness spaces across the district. Under community partnerships, we will deepen our partnerships with our current partners, with mental health providers, community organizations, and local nonprofits. We will also seek new partnerships with organizations, organizations in our community. Lastly, under community partnerships, we will increase our outreach to parents and families to ensure they participate actively in these wellness spaces. Under number three, funding, we will research and apply for mental health, wellness, and student support service grants through the county and through our community. Before we conclude our presentation, I would like to leave you with this final thought. Wellness spaces are more than, are more than just rooms on classroom campuses, I'm sorry, school campuses, they are safe spaces where students can find the support to thrive on a personal and also academic level. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the presentation, I do have a couple of questions, but I don't know if all of you have comments. One of the questions that I had that you answered on the slides was how are we creating sustainable streams of funding for our wellness spaces? And in order to continue receiving funding, for example, if we're going to be applying for grants, what sort of data are we collecting on the current wellness spaces? Because we know the research, you shared, you know, the benefits of wellness spaces, but in terms of, like, what are, what kind of data are we gathering to be able to measure the effectiveness of our spaces here?
It's a great question. That, that is the purpose of the presentation, is to give our board the current state of our wellness spaces, you know, we have wellness spaces across the district, and one of the things, one of the priorities for us is exactly to do that, we want to make sure that we measure the effectiveness of our wellness spaces across this district. We know that we need some work, and our goal is to create guidelines so that way we have common practices across the district. Now, our team at SCS, that's one of the things that we will look into, is what kind of data, with the help of OCDE, working with them as a resource, what kind of data do we want to collect to, so we can measure the impact that these services or teams are having for our students at the wellness spaces? So it is part of the process.
And thank you, Mr. Angel, and that's part of our discussion that we've had about wellness centers, because they, they came up very organically at the sites, you know, and through different partners, and so, you know, we might have, you know, check-ins at one or an iPad at another for, you know, check-in, so we were talking about how, you know, it's, it's different at, depending on the site and depending on how they structured it, and so part of our work is what we want to do is come up with those common best practices by studying what's there and look for options in the future.
I, I think it's safe to say that, I mean, we all believe that this is an incredible resource for our kids, you know, they're here to stay, we want to make sure they stay here, but we also want to seek the input of all stakeholders, you know, those that currently have them at the school site, we want to be able to hear from the kids, hear from counselors, hear from the psychs, hear from admin, you know, you know, what are the, what impact is it having on your campus? Sometimes, you know, it's something that we cannot measure, you know, it's, it's one of those things, but, you know, we want to make sure it's important for us to hear from all the stakeholders to determine the impact, but it's something that we are striving for, having some common guidelines so we can have commonalities across the district.
So is this something that all the staff on the site are trained on, so that if they can identify some behaviors or some signs on a student, that they know that they can refer them to the wellness space?
Well, I can talk about that. So those who are man, the people, personnel are managing the spaces at, at the site, yes, they have training to manage the space, but, you know, we have ongoing support and training for all staff on campus, you know, whether it's emergency response, whether it's a risk assessment, whether it's a threat assessment, you know, our department has done a great job to provide those resources and tools to our staff across the district to be able to evaluate or assess a student need. You know, we've been trained in determining student needs, whether it's academic, whether it's social-emotional, whether it's physical, you know, we've been trained in our department, you know, kudos to my team, they've done an incredible job providing those tools for our staff across the district, so the tools are there.
Okay, but it's something voluntary for our staff to take that PD, for example?
So for example, we've, we've given specific training for our counselors and psychs, they receive specific training that may perhaps our teachers do not. Emergencies response, that's a, that's an, that's another example that all staff, including teachers, personnel, classified even principals, have received, so it really depends on the type of training that we provide, because every, depending on, you know, the service that they provide, they receive a specific training.
Have you surveyed or asked our staff and teachers if that's something that they would be interested in? Because as our wellness spaces emerge, I feel that, you know, a teacher could only be more prepared, like you shared, right? Like, they get trained with all the other emergencies that happen on campus, and these are emergencies that we can't see, so, but it's still an emergency in the life of that child, so I would love to see that come to fruition, where we train all of our staff, like, even our classified staff, because they're all serving our students, and that moment can happen at any time.
And thank you for the feedback, I mean, I think that's part of the process, is, is to create that awareness, you know, mental health support has always been there, you know, we provide support for our kids, you know, for families, for our community, for, even for staff, but I think that's an incredible idea, where, where I think we can only see benefits from, when we create awareness and we educate everyone in our communities about the resources that we have, so yes, thank you for that.
And then I think I just want to add to that, too, because our elementary counselors also go out into the classroom and talk to the various classrooms, and that's a way in which they can, you know, talk about what resources are available to the students, so everyone participates in that, but I really think that it's a great idea to add, you know, make sure that there's that opportunity for the counselors to have, you know, extend that professional development to the staff that's there.
Yeah, which is my last question, I swear, I'm sorry. You know, I was looking at the wellness spaces at our elementary school sites, and I love the videos and the testimonies that you all included, but I'm curious as to, with our youngest students, how are they prompted to know that this is a space that they can go to, right? Like, in the beginning of the school year, do they take field trips with their class? Does a counselor come in, do they go visit the wellness space? What are some examples that some of our school sites have done?
I know for the, for Handy Elementary, it is new, and I know Erica and the staff at that school, they have done tours of the Handy Hangout, and the counselor in there has shown them what they can come in for during lunch, there's some lunch bunch groups and things that they can come in for, but then also when they're feeling sad, and I know, like, what Mr. Gonzalez spoke about with the elementary counseling teams going into the classrooms and doing those lessons, the students are learning how to identify their feelings, and when they're feeling upset, and, and things that they can do to cope with those feelings. So I think that as we're building this out, that would be something that we want to incorporate. A lot of the classrooms in the elementary schools have calming corners, and so the students are able to stay within the classroom, and they're, they're taught when and how to utilize those calm corners, so they don't even have to leave the classroom, they can go for a few moments, take a deep breath, use those techniques and coping strategies, and then reintegrate and re-engage with their classroom lessons.
Trustee Erickson?
In hearing you talk and talking about the, you know, sort of organic way in which a lot of these things happened, a lot of them happened because of the, you know, diligent efforts of parents, individuals that were very interested in, because of, for whatever reason, in mental health, it doesn't sound like there's a really, it sounds like it's an area that's ripe for a board policy, and this might be an area where maybe we should have, like, an ad hoc committee with staff, so that maybe a couple board members and staff and teachers, whomever, can work together to really create some policies that then carry forward, so that there can maybe be some consistency and consistency in what kind of training we might have. Obviously, a lot of this intersects with the social-emotional learning curriculum that our counselors bring, but because numbers and counselors can change potentially in things, it, it would be nice if, I think, if we had a policy that we could work on together, if that's something that is of interest.
Absolutely.
So, because I mean, I think it's super, super important that people understand this is part of a school safety plan, this is what makes our campuses safe, it's, we have, you know, things that are physical, you know, single point of entry, those sorts of things that are physically keeping them safe, but this is what's keeping them safe from within, we talk about, you know, this tragedy in Georgia and Uvalde and different areas, and those come about because you have young people who are not able to self-regulate and are experiencing trauma, bullying, mental health issues that aren't being addressed, and that can lead to an unsafe space, not just for that child, but for the other students around, so this is a key component to keeping our campuses safe globally, you know, the whole campus, because obviously when the students walk through our door, they don't leave whatever problems they had at the, at the door, they're coming in with whatever trauma is going on, or, or just even hormones, you know, different things that, yeah, they, they need help dealing, and so I just want to be really, really clear that this really is part of our Focus Area Three, genuine, genuine wellness and safety, you know, this is part of creating and implementing a systematic, integrated approach to student and adult wellness with a focus, this is part of our strategic initiatives, with a focus on restorative practices, engaging in a growth mindset, ensuring systematic district-wide implementation of anti-bullying and bullying prevention, and developing the safety protocols, so this is, this is a key element to work hand in hand with some of those other security measures, and so I really do thank you for bringing this forward, it definitely sounds like we can use some time to build. It definitely sounds like we can use some time to build some protocols and to really sort of develop it in a way that consists, that it can be sustained and really benefit as many students as possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Pelley?
Well, thank you for your report and for everything that you're doing. I'm going to kind of echo, a lot of the things I was going to say have been said. I really like the idea of having, having standardized, you know, some of this and I, I like the idea of a policy. We see some schools doing a really great job, others, it just depends kind of on the staff. If you have a great counselor, they're going into the rooms, they're doing the training. If you can get teachers on board, they're doing the calm corners, you don't see that everywhere. And I think the more we can train staff, all staff, and some of our certificated staff are some of the best at this, you know, it's the bus drivers and the lunch lady and, you know, the, the librarian and people who, who can really help these kiddos. But that's the other issue with funding. I hope that you guys will also look for additional, it's great that we have a counselor at every school. But again, in the elementary schools, the counselors are really busy, they're going into classrooms and doing those lessons and that's great, but that leaves that wellness space, you send a kid, but oh, nobody was there, so then they have to come back. So if they have a calm corner in the classroom, that's great, but having, you know, I'm always going to want more, we could have more, more counselors and someone to always be there, whether it's training, additional staff, you don't always have those extra people in the elementary schools, but that would be great to have somebody that's always in there who is trained. And I do agree, everybody on, on campus should be, should be trained for that. And then the other thing I just wanted to add, I don't know if there's other districts that we know of who are doing really great job at this, if they have something in place, it's always good to, let's look around and, and see if we can, you know, find someone that's, who's doing it if they have policies and kind of what they've done. And then just the last thing, again, and it's been said already, but that self-regulation piece is so important and it can start with our littlest, littlest kiddos. And I've seen it with the littlest ones who can tell you when they're getting upset and they, you know, they start by running, but pretty soon they learn they have a place to go if they need to, to get out. And once they can regulate themselves, pretty soon we have adults who can actually regulate themselves and we don't have so many of the issues that we're having. So this is just really important, but I appreciate what you guys are doing. We do still have work to do, but I think we're headed in the right direction, so thank you for your work.
Thank you.
I'm going to give a shout out to Marianne Bellistero, who's in our audience, because I saw firsthand what magic can happen with this. This was actually the day, I'm going to cry, this is the day after the Uvalde shooting and she was talking to her students in a way that, you know, not specifically about that, but really talking about things that they had heard and, and knew about and the way that, what grade do you have? Second grade. The second graders could express the feelings that they had was phenomenal. These second grade boys could, it could, it could describe what they were feeling and I think that that only comes from normalizing positive mental health and the social emotional learning that you've, your counselors provided, but you have expanded on. And so I want to shout out to you, but also know that that is something that is just so, so valuable. So, sorry.
Trustee Glass?
Okay. I want to thank you, Mr. Angel, Ms. Nelson, for this presentation, for educating the board, but also the community about this. I know that a board policy's been brought up as a potential action item, but I'd also like to present the idea of maybe doing a study with regards to a master's degree or a doctoral degree when it comes to looking at our students, seeing what impact it has on their lives and the community, in the school, but also the impact it has with the teachers and their ability to really support students on a school campus. I would love to see this district-wide, I know that's probably not the right time to say something like that, but it seems important to have this district-wide and for every level to have this, including Richland, you know, with regards to coping mechanisms, abilities to speak with people and to really self-regulate, that's what's been mentioned already. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
And Dr. Glass, I'd just like to comment on that. You know, I think when we look at what supports and what good they do on the campuses, you know, we do have a vision for trying to move forward in an addition-wide approach, but as we, as we were discussing it, you know, we don't know enough information and because these came up as grassroots, you know, we, we think that if we're going to go in that direction, we need to do some more studying first and we need to take a look at some things. But we were meeting with the Orange Unified Public Schools Foundation, I know Ms. Jones is here in the audience, and we were discussing that, that we need to do this, we need to study, we need to look at this, but we also don't want to hold anybody back at the same time and Richland was brought up as the potential next place for one. So I think at that meeting we said, we're not going to hold that one up, you know, but we're still going to do this work in, in preparing and making sure that we're creating a systemic approach to this.
Wonderful. Trustee Yamazaki?
Thank you for the presentation and for providing this critical service for our students. My incredible colleagues have said it all, they asked great questions and gave great feedback, so, and I concur with a lot of it. I agree with Trustee Erickson, that consistency is important and I agree with Trustee Pelley that our staff needs to be trained, including our, our classified, our certificated, so that they recognize that students need supports, you know, because it could be the kid on the bus and the bus driver could see them and say, hey, you know, they might need some help somewhere. I also like to thank our community partners that you mentioned who are working with us on this. I would like to specifically acknowledge Nicole Jones, who's out there in a crowd, and Catherine White, parents who with their vision really help us create the Wellness Center over at Villa Park High School. It's incredible over there if you have a chance to visit. Actually, I have one question, I feel actually incredibly awkward asking this, but there's so much misinformation out in the public sphere. And I know you mentioned that medical services are not provided, but I just have to ask just to make sure there's no ambiguity. Do we provide any surgeries at our schools?
No, we do not.
Okay. Do we give out any medications that are not approved by the parents or doctors?
We do not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Yamazaki. I know that when you were bringing up bus drivers and like that, saying, stating that even our bus drivers should also get trained, it's not to diminish the work that's already happening. I know that they're already doing great work, being, you know, not only transporting our students to their school sites, but they do have those conversations and they're the first people that our students see. And so I think that in itself is like building those relationships with our students, they're amazing at it, right? Like, they're not just bus drivers, but I know that they can only ask for more help. I know that they have asked specifically of like, how can I support the student? I see this behavior. So we're looking forward to the possibilities of, of a lot of this work and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the feedback, we took a lot of notes. We have a lot of work to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8B, proposed revisions to board policies, first reading. Superintendent Gonzalez?
Thank you. The district's board policies and bylaws are reviewed and updated periodically as new state and federal laws and regulations are enacted. The proposed revisions for the following board policies from the Business Services Division are presented for first read. I think my count was 15 and you were, you know, considering dividing those up.
I am. I, I don't have to do it during our board meeting, but if there's any comments on the first reading, we would take those suggestions now as well. I mean, from?
Yeah, and then President Page, if, if there are none tonight, we also, you know, are happy to discuss with any trustee between now and the next time we bring them back for the second reading.
Okay, great. We can definitely schedule some study sessions with you and Ms. Hollein if we have any questions on our business services policies. All right, consent items. Consent items may be taken all at once or is there any items that could potentially be pulled? Are there any? If not, can I have a motion? Trustee Yamazaki moves, is there a second? Trustee Pelley seconds, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion passes 502. Now moving on to non-agenda public comment. Trustee Erickson?
We have, we have five comments. So each speaker, I guess I forgot to read the, read this before. Persons wishing to speak should submit a public comment card prior to the meeting. In general, individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board on each, in this case, non-agenda item. The board shall limit the total time for public input to each item 30 minutes. A speaker shall not yield to any other person or portion of the time allotted, him or her to speak. The total time for non-agenda items at regular meetings shall be 30 minutes, the time, and then, in this case, each speaker will get three minutes. The first speaker is Marianne Bellistero.
Good evening, I normally have one around my neck. Good evening, Board President, School Board Members, Superintendent Gonzalez. My name's Marianne Bellistero, I'm a homeowner, I'm a teacher here at Handy Elementary School, thank you for the shout out. I'm coming you today because I'm part of the community schools and I understand you're going to have a presentation. Yesterday, I met with somebody from the Orange County Department of Ed because they wanted to talk about the presentation. I think, I've been with the inception of this from day one because in which schools I have served since coming to Orange have only been Title I schools and the community in which I serve makes my heart large. I don't think we're doing a great job. I'm going to be honest with you. I think we've dropped the ball after our first district personnel left. I think we've dropped the ball and put it on to Atosa, who's an amazing woman, but this shouldn't fall on her. We have asked, I personally, I'm sure there are some district personnel, I'm, I'm too old to play anymore games, I just asked because this is the community I had served, this is a lot of money. I think it would be great to come to a steering committee meeting, I was unable because I was piloting another program for the district. I think you need to ask questions to making sure where this money's going, how are we going to sustain this? Because this program is supposed to be sustainable in our schools. And it's a need, food insecurities, medical services, as you say, the mental health. I'd also like to volunteer for that thing that Mr. Angel talked about, because I don't believe in everything that was presented. I think we have work to do. And I would just like that you take the time, if you have questions on the presentation that's going to be presented, I have not seen it. My passion is, I just want us to do it well. And I want us to have a dedicated staffing personnel that isn't a teacher, that's amazing, that's doing 5 million things. This deserves our attention. And, you know, I'll do whatever it takes, I mean, that's what I do, because I'm supposed to do that, because it's a community that doesn't know how to speak up and doesn't always speak up for themselves. So they get a person who has white hair who's gone purple to make it a little more entertaining. But I just want you to be aware, and, and the people who are trying to do it, I'm sure they're trying to do a really good job, I just want to make sure we ask the right questions and do the right things for our community, because they are important to us and those are our citizens and those are who we serve. So thank you guys and have a good evening.
Next up, Jerry Oshuski. I probably, sorry, how do you say it? Jerry O.
Hi, I hope you're all doing well. My name's Jerry Oshuski, I am the head coach of Orange County Gold Aquatics and a volunteer coach at Villa Park High School. I sent a email to all board members this week that had more information, I just wanted to go over some bullet points with you regarding building a future 50-meter pool at Villa Park. The on-again, off-again functionality of the pool has been going on for the last several years. There's been some, there's quite a bit of decay, there's been some athletes that have been injured due to that decay. The Villa Park Pool is down as of yesterday and it's going to be in repair until Saturday. It is obvious that this is a neglected resource of the district. It is home to a really strong, strong teams and individual student athletes. As you're aware, the Villa Park is defending CIF swimming champions. Orange County Gold has been forecasted to be a silver medal club by USA Swimming, meaning Orange County Gold will be one of the top 50 swim clubs in the United States out of approximately 2,700 registered clubs. 98% of our athletes are OUSD students. The swimming community here is obviously thriving. As a silver medal club, we will be given grants to educate and train our athletes and Orange County Gold would also like to donate as much as we can to the 50-meter project. As outlined in the email I sent you, we would like to donate to the new facility, starting blocks, lane lines and bleachers totaling approximately $76,000. If the new pool is placed in the same footprint as the existing pool, we would like to donate an above-ground pool to put somewhere on the 36 acres of Villa Park High School land. In the last two calendar years, Orange County Gold slash Orca has donated approximately $14,000 to El Medina, Villa Park and Orange aquatic programs. The club continues to support the teams and the district. I know this multi-use pool will be a huge plus for the district and will keep the student athletes in the district and thriving. I'm happy to host a tour of the Villa Park Pool, I think that you should see it firsthand. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Sanchez?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Carlos, I'm an entrepreneur for real estate and I went to this OUSD since I was a little boy. I come before you tonight to speak on behalf of the hardworking athletes and dedicated coaches of our high school swimming program. This team has consistently demonstrated excellence both in the pool and out of it. So over the years, we've produced high swimming, achieving swimmers who have broken records, earned scholarships and brought pride to our community, yet despite these accomplishments, our team is, is being unfairly held back. The swimmers in our program don't show up for practice, they show up for their dreams, they give, they give their all and train early in the morning and late into the evening, all without proper facility to call their own. We've been promised a pool for years, a resource that would not benefit, that would not only elevate our team, but also benefit the broader community. Unfortunately, it seems that promise is being blocked by political gamemanship and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jolynn Lang?
Hi, so I wish I was here speaking of something as fun as the pool, but I wanted to talk just for a second about what happened in Georgia. One of the things that they said is, and I'm never going to say anything where two people passed away was success, but they said the response was really good. Part of the reason is that everyone was allowed to call a lockdown and they did really quickly. Serving, I had the opportunity to serve on my school site council for two years and therefore work on the safety plan. And one of the things that we discovered is our current system. And one of the things that we discovered is our current system to call in, the principal needs to be the one to call in the lockdown. A teacher cannot call it in. And it just, you know, brings up to my mind, what if the principal is across campus dealing with something? Shouldn't we have it so that a teacher who is obviously responsible enough to be in charge of the students all day can call in a lockdown and make sure that we can keep our campuses as safe as possible? Thank you.
And the last speaker is Laura Schlotman.
Good evening, President Page. Pleasure to meet you in person. Also Superintendent Gonzalez and directors, Board of Directors. My name is Laura, Dr. Laura Schlotman, and I'm the proud principal and executive director at a school here in the city of Orange, Explorer Academy. We opened our doors August 21st, and it's way overdue. I wanted to stop by and personally introduce myself and to thank you for all of your support. I mean it from the bottom of my heart. The last three, four months, I don't think I've seen sunlight. Been a little busy, but I wanna just thank you so much for this wonderful partnership. If you drive by Canal and Meats Avenue, I hope that you feel proud of the facilities and that you like what you see. I invite you, I just wanna, all of you, all of you are welcome to come and visit anytime. I wanna thank your staff, specifically Facilities Department. They've been phenomenal. Thank you so much. And I mean it from the bottom of my heart. I come here to you to say that, you know, I wanna be an ally, I wanna be a partner. And I'm just grateful for the opportunity to exist in this wonderful city that I'm falling in love with more so every day. I've had two and a half weeks with our scholars and our families. I'm just so proud to serve this community. So thank you for all the work that you do. I'm really glad I sat through the entire meeting because I have so much respect and just admiration for the work that you do and the seriousness of every item that you've taken. So thank you again, and look forward to collaborating with all of you. And again, open invitation to come in for a VIP campus tour anytime. Again, Dr. Laura Schlotman, a friend of the community and a friend of yours. So thank you again, and have a wonderful evening.
Okay, thank you, everyone. 18A, Board Staff Conference and Comments. Any additional comments before we adjourn?
Well, it's actually, it's positive. I just wanted to, I wanna say, you know, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for the update for situation that occurred. But one of the things that came to mind is, you know, I like the fact, over the years, we've increased our training with AEDs and placed them in strategic location. But then I was starting to think about how, whether a baseball game is occurring or, you know, aquatics was spoken, if there's a swim meet. There are no AEDs local, like literally in the baseball field, or, you know, on the pool deck, or the softball field, or what have you. Is that, can we do this in an expedient manner to review and/or to provide at least the trainers portable AEDs to carry with them? Or the coaches as well, so that it's immediate there? Instead of running to some office to get the AED and running back, that's time wasted. For example, like we are having a lot of football games at Fred Kelly. We do have an AED, but it's in a room. And so they would have to run to go get it while the incident is occurring. Versus if the trainer, who's already trained in it, can have a portable AED with them amongst all their other medical gear that they have, so that they do have it immediate to put it into play. So if that's something we can look into, because we're in full swing with sports in that manner, especially, as I said, with, you know, we have football going, and, you know, with Fred Kelly, we have a lot of attendance. I'm not just saying personnel or students, but also community members watching, you know, the game going on. So if that's something we can address, like immediately, at least with the trainers, who are already trained in this, to provide them portable AEDs, and then look where we could be strategic in placing these AEDs, you know, in other locations as well. So, see, it's a positive.
Our AED program is organized and coordinated through our risk management department. So I'm gonna ask Ms. Holguin if she can research that.
Perhaps we need a policy on that.
Well, I think we already have a policy on AEDs.
I mean, to say that, you know, that they should be portable and that they should be accessible.
I mean, that's gonna be up to you folks, but I'm just saying as far as...
And could we add Narcan to that as well?
I mean, that's a great comment, too, you know. So, again, I greened that up because, like I said, we're in full swing. And because of the wonderful weather we had over the weekend, especially Friday evening, you know, with the football games and everything that was occurring. So you start to put things in context in that manner. Not that I foresee that weather coming forward over the next couple of months. I mean, thank God, it's been where it is now. It's 30-degree difference, you know, like that. So again, I just wanted to bring that forward to see if we can do this in expedient manner, at least to get them to the trainers immediately, and then go out thereafter, you know, strategically placing them in that manner. And then I, real quick, and then as I was walking out, real quick, I had shared with Mr. Angel that the proposition, and I don't recall the number, that pass for mental health, I don't know if school districts can access that money. So he's gonna look into that to see if we can access some of that money for mental health and provide it into what was presented over here. So that was another suggestion I offered to him. So I don't know. He's gonna look into it. And one thing I forgot to mention is, please place in your hearts and pray for the individuals with the fires that are occurring. There's a lot of folks who have lost their homes and are being displaced, and it's a tragedy. I don't know if you knew how the fire started, but quite interesting. But anyway, just please keep them in your hearts, because a lot of people have lost their homes and are being displaced, had to mandatory, mandatorily evacuate as well. And no, I'm not just saying here in Orange County. It's grown exponentially in San Bernardino, up in the Big Bear as well. So a lot of folks are being affected right now, so please keep them in your mind and your hearts. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you. And then also Superintendent Gonzalez, can you share a quick update on the Villa Park Pool?
Yes, and so in terms of Friday, Saturday, I wanted to just get some clarification, but I know our maintenance department was advised of the issue with the pool pump. Upon investigation, they determined that the bearings in the motor caused the motor to fail, requiring replacement. So MNO has a practice of keeping a spare rebuilt motor in the warehouse so they can quickly address the issues like this when they arise. So they arranged for a crane company to be on-site at 8:00 a.m. this morning to replace the motor. And the pump is now back online. However, it takes a while for the chemicals to go through the system and for them to test it before students are able to use it. So I believe they're working through that piece right now, and the pool should be back up and operational very soon. That's not right? By tomorrow afternoon.
Thank you so much. Any additional comments?
No, I just gotta say thank you, Superintendent Gonzalez, for giving us that update. Again, I also like to give my gratitude for the district for that speedy process. I know just, it was just two days ago when the pool was just broken down, and our aquatics team and our aquatics program had to go over to Orange, and it's unfortunate that had to happen. So again, thank you for the speedy response, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. All right, we adjourn our meeting at 9:37. Thank you.